I guess I get the.
I'm pretty covered on the questions.
We have the money to do it now.
No, I don't remember the roots. I remember the conceptions and the spectators.
We didn't do the back one. We only had the ones on either side. The ones that had fallen down, the one behind, the duck behind the home plate was still in the U shape. So we didn't do that one.
There, we're spaced.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. We're not gonna call to order yet. We're just gonna do our, uh, the, finish up the budget items that we have to do and then we'll call, then we'll call to order.
If you wanna read, you should read all of the filings first.
I'm sorry? All right, our 2021 budget summary. Uh, the total revenue is six million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, with expenses of six million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. The difference in that is twenty-five thousand, five hundred. And we are going to make a motion. I guess we should do the ordinance first and then make a motion to advertise. Okay, so we're gonna make a motion. Now, I would entertain a motion to advertise the budget for approval by the citizens prior to our vote in December. For now. Dave? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you comment?
Yeah, my only, my only heartburn is, is the increase in, in the fire tax. The, the fire tax revenue could increase by virtue of the fact that, you know, you have improvements like, uh, working these properties, it's gonna be substantial improvement. So it's not a big deal, but in this year, I think we should, we need to pay attention to taxes. I might have a little bit, albeit it's a small increase. I have a little bit of a heartburn because we're gonna get more money without the fire, without the increase in the fire tax.
Any other comment? Questions? Okay, I have the first and the second. All in favor? Oh, we already did that. Sorry. Motion carries with one name. Okay, ordinance 2020-5 is the tax levy ordinance. And as Vanny just said, um, the tech, the fire-related tax went from point two eight to, from, I'm sorry, from point two five to point two eight. It's a two dollar and eighty cent increase on a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So it is a small amount. But, uh, I understand Vanny's objection to, and the tax rate for general purposes went up by eighteen dollars and fifty cents, which is a total of one point eight five mils. So it's eighteen dollars and fifty cents on a hundred thousand dollar of assessed value. I would need a motion to accept the ordinance. Engage? Seconded by Brian. All in favor? Opposed? Dennis with the same exception?
Yes, right.
With the same exception. Okay. Motion carries. Okay, this time I'd like to call it an order. Please rise for the pledge.
Let's look at these two flags in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for all those deployed in the mother of silence. Uh, we have some veterans from our DFW, the New Freedom DFW poster tonight. Uh, you'd like to take a couple of minutes, uh, if they could just stand and introduce themselves or you can stay seated and introduce yourself if you'd rather.
Captain John Smith, Commander Post 712.
Carl Jenko, Senior Vice Commander, New Freedom Post 7012.
Alex Kelly, Adjutant Quartermaster, DFW Post 712.
Terry Kelly, uh, had no responsibility here at all.
Pete Tucknell, Trustee, and 70 year 12.
Sam Johnson, Fire Marshal.
Jeff Woods, Junior Race Senator, and February Chapel.
Uh, thank you. Um, a couple of things on the President's report. Um, I wanted to announce that, uh, I think I've told everybody at this point, uh, our borough manager has accepted. Uh, he's going to be giving notice on 11/16 and he will start here February 1st. So we're not announcing names or anything until after he gives his notice on the 16th because he wants to do that in person, in person, uh, with his council. I have something I wanted to present tonight. And I'm gonna be making a motion. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind taking the meeting for a little bit. Okay. Uh, DFW Post 7012, um, and in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Auxiliary and Dave is a member of the Auxiliary of the Post. Uh, it says out in front that the post is dedicated in memory of the men and women of this vicinity who served in the armed forces of our country, preserving our freedom and our way of life. Uh, the post was founded in April of 1946 and they have, they got their current location, uh, in March of 1948 at 123 West Main Street. Uh, today there are a hundred and seventy-seven combat vets that are regular members of the DFW Post, nine from World War II, spanning all the way up through, uh, the Mideast. Uh, they've served our community for 74 years. They, uh, do things like the Easter egg hunt, Memorial Day coffee on Route 83, Memorial Day grave flags, New Freedom Festival wreaths across America, the cemetery cleanup, uh, Children's Christmas, Diabetes Association breakfast, uh, their last car show, which of course with COVID, but their last car show, uh, they donated the money to our K9, uh, SRPD to help with that. They participate in the S Y C food pantry, food drive, the senior center, Rose Fire. They give out scholarships every year, um, to graduating seniors, rallies for fire and police, Cars for the Troops, Toys for Tots, Coke Drive, Rides for Vets, Color Guard, and they also have a monthly community breakfast. So they're busy. Uh, the, the F, the W, the one thing that's not on here is that in, on, in April of, uh, 2019, the Director of the DFW addressing the US House discussed how 20 veterans a day commit suicide. And the VA, the F W outreach reaches out to those people and gives them a home, gives them a sense of community and helps to get, get through those, uh, those hard times. So we don't know how many people, of course, that they save, but it, it's significant. Uh, currently, to go along with COVID, the buildings are failing. Uh, there are two roofs on the, uh, properties. A foundation is bad, the chimney's bad. Uh, the main, main posts were stru-, they were struggling to get the electrical done, uh, and keep the electrical going. Uh, the New Freedom DFW by charter has to remain in New Freedom. They need a new building. So I was talking to Jack and Carl and trying to figure out what New Freedom could possibly do to help. Uh, New Freedom Borough has always been generous in supporting the lines and the scouts. We've leased ground to the Lines Club. We've leased grounds to, leased ground to the scouts to build the Scout House at Veterans Park. Uh, these are the men and women who served America in foreign lands. They gave a piece of their life for America, for New Freedom. It's now our honor to give a small piece of New Freedom to them and that's what I'm here to ask for tonight. Uh, there is parkland at the bottom of Weathers, Weathersfield. It's zoned to allow a private club. The V S, the F W is a community service organization similar to the lines and the scouts. This action will keep the DFW Post 7012 alive and in New Freedom. The building will go, have to, of course, go to planning commission and zoning because it is, it is an exception. Um, so we'll have to go through that. Uh, before taking questions on this, um, I think I would like to make the motion just so we know what's on the table. And I think it's especially appropriate to be making this motion so close to Veterans Day for our veterans here in New Freedom. So the motion is to lease to the New Freedom DFW Post 7012, the wooded ground to the right or southwestern side of Weathersfield Drive bordered by North Constitution and Weathersfield for a 99-year renewable and perpetuity lease for the sum of a dollar a year. And what that will do is it will allow them to put in a new post, a new building, and I have, um, copies of the plot plan. So I'll open up the questions.
What, uh, what total acreage would be allotted out of the Weathersfield property?
I'm sorry, Dave?
What would the total acreage out of the Weathersfield property be allotted for?
Turn on your microphone.
I'm, I'm, go ahead. I'll share you.
I'm sorry. What, what total acreage would be allotted for?
I'm, I'm thinking it'd be like two acres. The little, the wooded plot right here is, I think, a little bit over five acres. So I mean, it would basically be the footprint of the building. I mean, they've also talked about cutting some trails in for walking trails in the woods, but that would benefit all the residents, not just the DFW.
So if we, if we, if we, they just, they have to have a, it's just a regular processing of the planning commission.
Right, they would need building permits, planning commission, zoning.
They would need a special exception, not a guarantee. So a special exception's pretty, I won't say easy to get, but you follow the criteria for the special exception. I mean, you know, the zoning court here, of course, really obligated by the special exception.
Right. Any qu- questions from the audience? Any citizens?
Is that property being used for anything at all right now?
No, it's really just brush. There's not even any trails cut right now through it. It's just, um, a patch of woods as you go into Weathersfield.
Does a survey need to be done because of traffic coming off of North Constitution under there?
Yeah, the road's already there. I don't think you, you have a problem with that.
Okay.
And, uh, and the traffic has changed. Yeah, it's actually intermittent traffic. It's not, I mean, it's not gonna be any more than what you get whenever the soccer game's over and the people come out of the soccer field.
I was gonna, I meant, the next question, would they use the existing driveway?
Yes.
Oh, they have to move the gate or anything like that, or?
Yeah, the gate would have to be moved.
The gate would have to be moved.
It'd probably be moved forward about a hundred feet and put back up.
Nate would be responsible for putting in parking?
Yes.
I'll second your motion.
I was gonna say, we need, need a motion.
I made a motion.
Make a motion in a second.
I was gonna say, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, you got all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? My vote is also aye. Thank you guys for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, you can stay if you like, but we'll understand if you wanna leave.
Thank you very much.
For any more?
No.
No, ma'am.
It's okay.
We'll let you know when the grand opening is.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Granddaughter, take care of your foot.
That's a cute hat. Your daughter's making it. This is one cheney. It's really soft. It's like a felt inside.
Okay, um, uh, I've been hit with a lot of rumors and stuff, so I, I need, I feel like I need to address it, so I, I'm, I'm going to. Um, I was on REC council, I think for 12 years. I lost count. I think I was off and I came back on. Uh, I am very pro REC. I mean, I think, even though I'm a fiscal conservative, I do believe that, uh, it takes a village to raise a child. And I think that REC is, is very important for that. So some of the things that I've heard in the community and from different people, uh, the Bercentine Pavilion that they've agreed to build in Margate Fellow Park is a separate issue from the playground and that pavilion is going to be built as soon as we're ready for them to build it. Um, the teen playground, um, and I apologize if there was anything that I did to create this, but we gave, we discussed it at the last meeting and the meeting before and in September I passed the information on to REC council and I felt they were sufficiently notified and they had a meeting in between, so I felt that there was, should have been no problem with them being notified. Uh, the pad for the skate and pickleball was discussed, I guess, last, our last meeting. That was something that I called Mary Ann about and we agreed where to put it. I mean, you picked where to put it. So I, I thought that we were on the same page with that. I'm hoping that the teen playground will get the kids off the smaller playground and that the skate ball slash pickleball pad will get the skaters off of your tennis court and over onto that. The REC director is not in any way, shape or form replacing the REC board. That is not happening. The REC director is going to be paid for by council under grant and the REC director will work with REC to hopefully increase the number of programs that we're running and make it so that it's REC for all age groups, all abilities, and that we have a good, solid REC program. Hopefully it'll take some of the pressure off of you guys so that you have more time for fundraising, more time to do what you need to get done for REC. I think that addressed all the, all the, all the things.
Can we respond?
You, you can, but I, I think I'm gonna let you respond during the time we set aside for you guys. I mean, you know, I just, I just, this is my President's report, so I really just wanted to get that out there. But yes, definitely, you can, you can respond however you would like. Okay. I, I think that's all I have for the President's report. So the next thing we have is the consent agenda.
And we can be accepted consent agenda as written?
The motion to accept the consent agenda is written.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
That's it, other than the, uh, building was.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it all.
These are all due on the books, uh, from, from last month.
That'll probably go up if you get another COVID shut down too. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, probably comment on agenda items? Okay. And you, you mind if I start with REC? Yeah, maybe you're off. Okay, and that would be REC.
Okay, do we come up there just from here or what?
Oh, there's a microphone if you like.
Thank you for staying on. I'm Mary Ann Michael, President of Recreation Council.
Look that up.
There I am.
Speak well to me.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, all right. Um, first I would like to extend Recreation Council's gratitude, um, gratitude for the completion of Margate Fellow Park and the wonderful tennis courts, playground and the recently installed new benches at Veterans Park. As much as we appreciate the borough's support, we find our board often feeling overlooked or at least confused about direction on some projects. As we try to serve the community, it can be somewhat overwhelming with only four members that often have other commitments and cannot volunteer an excessive amount of hours. Um, we did, we are adding a fifth person, which we're really happy about. She's getting her paperwork together, so that'll take care of our quota of, um, members that we need to have. Um, we believe it would benefit all parties, the residents, the council and the REC board if we agree to meet once a month as a workshop with you, um, two members from boroughs, or, for your borough council and two members from us. Um, this allows some ideas to be discussed, plans proposed, finances considered and taken back to our respective boards and later discussed at both your and our public meetings. I believe our goals are the same, but how we are approaching them is significantly different. Um, I wanna still work together and I wanna have great programs for this community and, um, you know, in response to what you said, I feel like things were said in passing and, you know, a brief conversation does not a motion make and that's what's happening is all of a sudden we have four parts of recreation and we're like, you know, feeling secondary to that. But, you know, I want us to figure this out and work together and do what's best for New Freedom.
Um, I agree and I think that, um, one thing that we could do, I mean, you remember back, we used to switch off and one of us would come to council every month?
See, I don't, I don't remember. I don't think I was part of this.
I've been, I've been in coun-, I mean, I've done it.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, like, I know Mairead was here all the time.
Yeah, Mairead was here all the time.
That part I did, I didn't get passed on if that happened, but I never know.
But I, well, I think, I think we should. I mean, you're, I mean, you're under committee reports tonight and, you know, the mayor reports, the solicitor reports, all the committees report, so you are our REC board and so I really think it'd be a good idea for you guys to come. And it doesn't have to be the same person each time, but then you would be here and you would hear us make a motion to do whatever or say that next month we're gonna vote on whatever. And then there would be no break, or hopefully very little break time in communication. I guarantee it'll never happen.
It's sad, but there's also, you know, um, we would like your involvement in what we're doing too. So I would still like to have these twice a month or whatever, you know, meetings where we can all get together. You know, you guys have great ideas, we have great ideas and let's see what we can make happen.
Yeah, I think we could come up with a couple of people on, on REC coun-, or to come with to REC council and meet and come up with some programs.
And, and, um, I'm a friend of yours, but do you mean when Mairead used to come to the meeting every month and say what was going on?
Yeah, just as, yeah, a brief report that, you know, that just tell us where, where you guys are. Yeah, just a brief, yeah, a brief report that, you know, that just tell us where you guys are.
Okay. Yes, I do. I thought there was something separate about that.
Okay.
But thank you for hearing me. I hope we can figure this out and, you know, come up with, you know, great programs. Tanya's given me wonderful ideas.
Yeah. One thing I probably should mention, recreation has never really done parks, per se. I mean, you guys, I mean, even the budget you just submitted, I went back 10 years. You don't really put any money in the budget to do grass cutting, maintenance, put in a new bench or whatever. That all comes out of the general fund, and it comes out of this council. And the council is responsible for upgrading parks or making, you know, you guys certainly, I mean, certainly have the voice to come and tell us, "We would like you to do this, or this, or this." And I think I've told you, you know, if you guys come up with whatever and you have an idea to fund it and we can help, then of course, you know, bring it to council and we'll help fund it. But really, the crux of the whole thing is that we need to have programs. And that's what really rec's responsibility is. It's the program area, in my mind.
I was always of the impression, you know, because what happened out there, you know, about the idea of creation and application of the thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And you guys did a great job. We get nothing but compliments on Marge Goodfellow Park. I mean, in fact, I think when the rail trail people come in tonight, I'm sure they'll say something good about Marge Goodfellow Park, because when we went on the trail walk with them, they loved it, you know. DCNR came in, when they planted the trees, they loved it. I mean, it was, you know, I don't disagree that it's a great thing.
When you look at that, you're like, we were very, very much a part of what happened.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
To me, and it was always my understanding that, you know, I have to look at our file, but I did think that we were, you know, we had responsibility for the parks, not promoting the lawn and all that stuff, but, you know, playgrounds and stuff like that, I would think would fall under.
Well, even Marge Good...
Us being involved, you know, not...
Yeah. And it started with a grant, so I mean, but that, and I, you know, what's gonna be available in the future, I don't know. But certainly we'll look for grants, and we'll try to find things to do and, you know, to help out, but yeah. So, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you kind. I appreciate you saying that. And I really, really would like somebody from rec to come each time and report whenever it's the committee time, because I think that would like clear up a lot of issues.
Right. Okay. And I appreciate what you said as well.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks, Mary.
May I comment as well?
Sure.
I want to be nice too, but I want to, I had a couple questions and a couple comments you said, because I am, I'm a treasurer on the rec council. I worked on the budget. And we do do dirt and mulch and things for Veterans Park, so it is part of, you know, we don't do everything. We don't go to the lawn. But we do have budgeting for care of parks. And we do feel that of certain responsibility for the, that of the maintenance with the woods, with replacing the benches last year. I've only been on rec council for about two years, maybe not even quite. But in the time I've been here, I've seen us take care of quite a bit of the parks. I kind of wasn't sure, you know, we, I, if there's supposed to be delineation, it needs to be clearer, because we do feel that there is a responsibility for parks. The other question, you know, the other thing, in your opening statement, I guess I just kind of want to put into the minutes or whatever, it wasn't presented to rec council about the teen playground in a formal setting. We didn't vote on it. I never heard of it until I found out it had been a motion and had passed. So, I just think I want to just make sure that that's in the minutes here, that it really wasn't presented formally. It may have been discussed in somebody's kitchen or something, or on a Zoom meeting or something.
Well, it was presented in council, and it was a couple, three-month process, you know, and like I said...
But it wasn't brought to breath.
I'll take that as the lead, and I'll take ownership of that, not with the following.
That was just a big surprise to hear that this motion had come and passed and that it had been presented, because it really happened. So, I just kind of wanted to make sure that that was...
I guess the only other thing I want to make clear is, this was a gift. I mean, this was, this was people in the community saying, "Here's money, put in a teen park."
Well, see, that's the other thing. We didn't know where the money came from. We were told there was $36,000 approved, and we're like, well, where'd that come from?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't given out in general. I guess that's why I want to bring it up, because it was a directed donation. It was like, "Here's $36,000, put in a teen park." I was upset that the teens didn't have anything to do, so I, and it was me, and I went out and I, and Tanya went out and found money, and so that, it was a directed donation, so, and it was borough council. And, I mean, no matter how you cut it, the borough council has the responsibility to upgrade or do things to parks, so...
I guess we just got a little cut out of the loop on this particular one, and I'm sure it was just a oversight and not intentional in any way, but that's all. I just kind of wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, I understand.
And I appreciate Ryan, you know, that he comes to our meetings. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Erica, have, I don't have...
If we could have clarity, you went out and got the $36,000 from donations, just where? I mean, who? What? I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, just where did $36,000 fall from?
Well, it was community, it was donations from businesses.
From businesses.
Back in that corner is, yeah, and individuals. I mean, back in that corner is $6,000 of it. My wife donated $6,000. So, I mean, you know, it's just what we did. We felt strongly enough about putting it in that, you know, we just really thought it was a good idea. And anytime you have a gift like, I mean, it's, it just is a good thing. I mean, it's not costing the taxpayers anything.
Yeah. I mean, don't get me wrong. I'm not opposed to it or anything.
I know, yeah.
It was just a surprise, and I didn't know, we didn't know as treasurer of rec council, I kind of was like, well, where'd that money, did it get redirected? I don't know, you know. So, it's, I know it was a gift that specified for that. That's wonderful. That's great news, so.
And then the last thing I want, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jen.
The last thing I just wanted to touch base on is I'm opposing that we're adding things. I know the park, of course, is going away, you know, we're finding that we don't need that. But I want to make sure that the walking path is still not impacted at the universal...
We haven't taken anything away from that, but again, I mean, you know, have you, I mean, the price of the walking path, it's probably gonna require another grant, because, I mean, for a mile of track coming in.
I just know that we're adding stuff. I don't want, you know, things messing up with the initial design of that park, because people are really looking forward to a walking and running back and then a multi-field purpose field as well. Okay, thank you.
So, I guess the only issue that I have is, at the pre-meeting on October 1st, when we had a conversation about the teen playground, which has great intentions, we said, "Okay, this is a great idea. What we would request is, you know, that a survey be done, see if it's something the community wants." I mean, we are, as volunteers and voted members, we are servants of our community. And so therefore, I think it's always wise to see what the community thinks. I mean, that's what I did for the playground. Also, you know, for, and it was agreed upon, it was agreed upon in that meeting of a survey? Also, that...
Do you recall survey? Because I don't recall saying I was gonna, why would you even do a survey on something that was already fully funded and was a gift?
To see if it is going to be well-used. Well, I didn't...
There wasn't a survey on the whole park.
No, there was a survey on the playground. We...
And I don't think it was funded when we had our pre-meeting that we knew of.
Yeah, it was.
I, oh, we did not know it was funded at that point.
Yeah, I, when I gave the information to Jen, I said, I said, "Here's the, what we're planning on putting in."
Wait a minute.
I asked for a location.
Wait a minute. There was, the only question you asked me was, "What type of equipment would you like to see?"
And the location.
And I sent you a couple pieces of equipment, and I never heard back. So, there was nothing to take to rec council. I checked every single one of my emails. There was no plans sent to me to submit.
I handed them to you, Jen.
No, I have no plans.
I handed them to you when you were at our meeting in September.
Those were, that was an idea. If that was, that was an idea that you said, this is an idea that we have. Those were not the full plans. Then why did you come back to me and say, "What other equipment? What equipment would you like to see at a teen playground?" You texted that to me, and I sent you a couple of ideas.
Right.
But there was no plan, like, in stone that was brought back to rec council. Nothing.
I mean, I have copies of the plans that I gave out that night. I gave everybody on council.
That wasn't set in stone, though.
I gave you a copy of the plan. I gave you the equipment list, and I asked you for a location.
This was the idea. You said, "This is the idea that we have for a teen park." It was nothing that was presented in October.
I believe at that meeting, it was also discussed about the location along the stream or creek, or whatever you want to call it.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is it was never, like, formally presented. That was never set in stone. It was the idea. At that September meeting, it was said, "This is the idea that we have for the teen playground." Then a couple days later, Andy came back to me in a text and said, "Hey, what kind of equipment would you like to see at the teen playground?" I sent him a couple pieces of equipment and never heard back.
Was that what we're saying here, is that we're trying to...
But it's already set in stone, but like...
It's already done, so moving forward, we're saying...
Yes, and all I'm saying is, is in your notes that you sent to us from that pre-meeting, it said that you wanted to keep rec council informed, and that has to go both ways.
Right, and that's why I want you guys to come to a meeting every month with council so that you could tell us what you've done for the month. I think it'll stop things from happening, like, when the playground was done with the Joel Stoneberg's program that you guys decided to do. I mean, we would have known at that point, we would have been able to say at that point, "He needs to get insurance. He needs to get his child safety clearances."
Well, he already had all of that and tried to drop it off, but the office was closed, so he emailed it over. Not a problem.
After he was told.
You shouldn't have told him to contact the office.
I did, but he did not...
Because it all requires a contract, and we would email a contract, same as we'd email to you or fax to you.
And I put in the contract that night of the pre-meeting. I sat there and filled it out and handed it in, and I asked him previously to hand in his clearances. And so...
I think we, I think we got them the day before the program started.
But we got them.
So, I mean, but, yeah, I think, but it's okay. It worked out.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know where you want to go with this.
I'm just saying, final plans would have been nice to share with rec council for us to know about it.
They were the final plans. I gave them to everyone on council and actually suggested we take a 30, you know, wait a month and vote on it at the next meeting, which I agreed with. I said, "There's no rush. We'll do it at the next meeting." We did want to beat the price increase, because there is a price increase for 2021, and Steve had talked about the price increase, and if we ordered it before December 22nd, I think. But we had to get it in their queue, and then I talked to Donnie about, can we store it? And he said, "Yeah."
Do you remember?
So, I mean, it worked, you know, so. And I understand what you're saying, and we will try to all communicate better in the future.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have those plans. Valerie doesn't have those plans, so, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
But what's done is done, so.
They're saying none of us have the plan.
None of us have them.
I don't have the plan.
Not one of us.
Sid gave it to everybody at the meeting. I don't remember getting a plan.
Well, I put it in your hands. What happened to it after that, I can't account for.
Are you saying you gave it to all of us at that pre-meeting?
No, I gave it to Jen.
Oh, okay.
And I assumed that Jen would share it with rec council. I mean, I don't know how...
Are you talking about this...
If one of you come to council, I'm going to assume that if we tell you something, that you'll take it back.
Are you talking about the September meeting?
I'm sorry?
You're talking about the September meeting. You gave me plans?
Yes.
You had stated in that meeting that that was an idea of the plans that you have. You said you looked into it for a teen playground, and here's an idea of the plans that you have for a park. At the October meeting, you're saying all of us got it. We did not get anything at October. After that September meeting, you reached out to me and you said, "What kind of equipment would you like to have?" In my mind, that says the plans were not final.
Okay, we've already gone through all this.
Right. I just want to be clear.
In my mind, I gave you the plan. In your mind, I didn't, but it's okay. Let's just move forward, and we'll see if we can do things better as a group. Okay?
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. If we could get the website updated, make sure we... Singer Road is still closed, according to that. So, we could, you know, just kind of look over that monthly and update. The other thing, I've gotten a lot of questions from residents about the new construction that we have posted. Is that, is that occurring? Is, are they gonna continue to resurface over the winter, or are they gonna wait till spring?
They'll do a patch, um, over the winter, they'll do a patch.
After they...
They get a little patch replaced.
Okay. A lot of residents are thinking, "Well, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna go ahead and like, oh, are we using fuel funds?"
No. They said not local fuels.
Okay. All right. I know usually after October 15th, you can't do that, but we will be doing that by what do we anticipate?
We have no idea. It's gonna depend on the weather.
So, it's probably gonna be sometime in '21?
It's gonna be, yeah, if the weather holds out, maybe what you're willing to think.
Okay.
It'll depend on the weather right now.
Very good.
In these states, I guess.
So, we are can, people are just asking, you know, "Mr. Mayor, what's going on here?" Another thing, I'd like to really thank the police department. I'm gonna try to get, maybe have them come to our meetings so they can give us a report. I'd like to thank them. They have really been observing the playground. As I said last meeting, we had, one of the tables was broken. They caught the young man that did it. He's going to reimburse the borough for that. But another thing, I think it was Officer Blaze, Detective Blaze today. He said he's been looking out for the basketball park. I mean, he went by and saw, there was garbage everywhere. So, he went down and did a community effort, based talk with everybody that was there. There were about 15 kids there, you know, asking them to please clean up after themselves. There's a garbage can here. All the kids got together. They cleaned it up. They put it all in the garbage can. And these are the types of things that I'm really appreciative of with all our parks that the police are doing. It took a little bit of coaxing, but I'd like to publicly thank them for the job that they're doing there. The other, only other thing that I have right now is I have a problem or a question, and I'm glad that you're here, because it's gonna involve you. We are talking about putting a pad in for skateboards. Am I correct? And pickleball?
Nope, it'll just be for pickleball. There will be no sign up that says anything about skateboards.
Okay, so there will be no skateboards allowed?
Nope, we're not gonna put a sign up that says, "No skateboards allowed," any more than you do on any other, but Mary Ann Anne and I talked about was just putting a pad down. If people skate on it, they skate on it. If they don't, they don't.
Problem is, we're asking the police to monitor the playground area and keep the kids on skateboards, off of skateboards, and getting to a point where they're cited, because we do have an ordinance.
You have an ordinance against?
Skateboards on public, yes, in the parks, on the sidewalks, in the public streets.
And I'll be that too.
Yeah, so, so that's why I'm, I'm deferring that to you. If we're gonna have police enforce it one area of the park, and we have an ordinance, do we need to make some adjustments somehow, or?
Okay.
Well, tennis courts are imposed, and skateboards.
Well, and the, the police are even asking that, do we post signs on the van stand? Because that's how the table got broken, because the kids decided they were gonna use that as a ramp for bikes and for skateboards. Uh, so, they, I asked them to keep the kids off the van stand, because what they do is they're on there, going as fast as they can to the end of it, jumping, and then going down into the stones. And the police are saying, we would like you to put a sign there, no skateboards.
How many kids are there that need them to fill up? If you count it, I mean, you have enough to count. Do you see a lot of them, twelve or three or?
Well, one day, there was fourteen of them down on the basketball court, and the police went down and, and asked them to please get off the, get off the basketball court. You know, some of the, half of them were bikes, half of them were skateboards. They've been on the, uh, tennis courts several times, asking them to, to get off. I have done that probably four times, reminded them that, you know, it's a tennis court, not a skateboard, skateboard park. And, you know, they've all been very, you know, accommodating to leave, and, and I haven't really had a problem other than one time. Uh, but that's why we put the signs up down there, because the police ask that's hard to enforce when the signs aren't there.
Jen, I saw your rec minutes last time that you were looking at, um, skate parks and insurance and stuff like that. Are you guys still doing that?
No, I gave up.
Gave up?
Yeah, because I tried pushing it through about five times and was denied, so.
And guys have been going on for twenty years.
Well, you have a liability insurance.
We're a low-risk borough, is what I understand from Tanya.
No, it was never said. Or, uh, the permit, they will not insure skate parks at all.
Okay. I, I was told we're a low-risk borough, and so.
Skate parks are high risk. There is no such thing as a low-risk borough.
Right, that's what I mean. Like, you keep, they don't want to have a high-risk activity.
They will not.
In this borough. Right, that's what I'm saying. Um, there are signs, like, in York, where they have a skate park, that says, skate at your own risk. They probably have twenty signs up there. Um.
So this, do you want to comment on the trajectory of this program?
Like, you know, most municipalities are in the exact position that you're in, that they check into it, look at the liability, and ultimately pass on constructing a skateboard park, uh, due to the fact that even if you have the signs and asking them to waive their liabilities, typically a child that doesn't have the ability to accept the waiver of liability, therefore you're stuck with the claim in the way.
Um, I have a couple of commit, uh, other, uh, comments, but I'll do that under committees as to the police.
Okay. Did you have anything, Steve?
Oh, no, I didn't have anything to say.
Good. I did, I will make a comment that, uh, we have a meeting scheduled, I think for the fourteenth.
For the.
Sixteen.
The sixteenth, for, um, to talk about the nuisance ordinance and to try to put some teeth into it and see what we can do. I have to say that I, I'm, I'm not hugely hopeful, but at least we can try to see if we can, uh, do something to get, uh, for the cars, like, that we know about up on Washington, I guess it is, um, and some of the other places. So, uh, that meeting is gonna happen with, uh, Steve and I think, um,
Wade, the mayor.
Wade and the mayor and myself, so, and, uh, anyone else who wants to.
On the sixteen?
It's on the six.
We can't have a court.
Oh, yeah, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't have a court. Yeah, so just the three of us here. But I will report back.
I kind of would like to be there if we can have that meeting.
That will give us two.
If it's possible.
Two council members. Okay, I'll let, I'll let you know.
Will you let me know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've personally been dealing with that on, being the mayor, they get my phone number, and I've been on the phone, uh, in the last month with probably about six different people that this concerns, and we need to address this with, uh, with the solicitor and see what we can do, uh, for that part of that community.
Want that?
Yep.
Police.
Do you want me to go, or do you?
No, go ahead. I don't know, I, I have some comments that I need to make.
All right, so we had our first in-person meeting last week. That's the first time that we've actually been in person. So the chairman did read, uh, six letters, thanking letters or letters of appreciation that the department has received, uh, since we started going on to the online meetings, thanking the department. One was from New Freedom for the Marder Stewart socks that they had, uh, thanking the department for their response. The police department received just under forty-one thousand dollars in COVID grant money from the federal government, that was distributed through York County. A little over eighteen thousand of that was transferred to the operating budget, this, to replace the money that has been spent so far on COVID-related expenses, and the money that was given back to the high schools for the partial refund. The chief reported there had been no new vehicle arsons in New Freedom. They're still doing those extra patrols. Uh, there were no reported problems in any municipalities on Halloween or on Election Day. And, uh, the commission will be having a continuation meeting on November seventeenth, because we were unable to reach an agreement on the budget. Basically, uh, Mike Sharkey came here and told you guys about the new obligated activity, uh, data that we would like to use to figure out which municipalities, how much percentage each municipality pays. Glen Rock will not accept that, and Glen Rock wants to use the old PPU formula that we have and those percentages. Police, police chief did recommend using the PPU formula as well. So, um, we're trying to find a compromise, a, as you know, New Freedom benefits right now under the obligated activity data. So Glen Rock would end up paying an extra, I believe it was close to seventy thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand.
So they say, they say they can't afford that. So we're hoping at the next meeting to find some compromise. Uh, one of the members from Glen Rock, Victoria, said that she thought Glen Rock was willing to compromise. So somewhere between, uh, the PPU's and the obligated activity would be a percentage that maybe we could all agree on. So as of right now, we have that final number. We just don't know how much each municipality pays for that. And that was all ahead.
What was, what was the total, um, for all municipalities? Do you have that?
Yes, I, I do. So, it, the total budget is a little bit over two million, but when you take away the school contributions and railroad, for the four municipalities, it's one million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. And that gets divided up, and if you look at, under the obligated activity, which is the new data that Mike Sharkey was proposing from the IGA committee, New Freedom would pay five hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. Under the, uh, twenty-twenty PPU's that we used, it would be five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven. So, um, Stewartstown paid a little extra under the new formula. Glen Rock paid a lot extra. Shrewsbury's pretty much stayed pretty close to the same.
So that's, adding to that, I, I think that's what we have to do. We, we need to come to a compromise on that. For any municipality to have to pay an additional eighty thousand dollars is asking an awful lot. And I think we need to come to some type of an agreement. Um, it'd be nice for New Freedom, because I think ours is forty-four thousand dollars less. But there, there's something there that's not quite right in figuring the incidence without the rest of the formula in there. I could give it to you. It's, it's about, we came out with thirty-six thousand lines on an Excel spreadsheet, and I don't think you really need that. Uh, I've got a, a spreadsheet here that you, it's so, you know, when I try to print it out, it's so small, you can't even read it. But we have to come up with something fair, and, and my opinion right now is, we need, we went with the PPU system. Bruce, I think you'd like the PPU system, am I right?
Uh, you couldn't be more wrong.
Oh, sorry.
The PPU system sucks. We just put it blunt.
Unfortunately, the police department itself seems to think the PPU system works, but I think it's because it makes it easier for them to, to tally. Erica, you've been with every, with me in every meeting. What did you?
Part of the puzzle in this is, on a three-year rolling average, it includes twenty-sixteen, the, the half-years of twenty-seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, Glen Rock had a very high average in twenty-sixteen. So that's why they're being slammed right now, but next year coming, when twenty-sixteen rolls off, then I think it will come in line with what it needs to be. But with this right now, including twenty-sixteen, that was very high usage for them, this is what's happening.
So we, we have to come to terms with, with each other, at, every municipality, and think, okay, what happens if we lose Glen Rock?
I did speak to, um, Buck Buchanan today from Shrewsbury, and, um, he feels like, maybe Shrewsbury feels like they're tired of supplementing Glen Rock. And I think Dennis could probably speak to it, that, I think he says for twenty years now, or how, how long he said.
Twenty years, but I mean, there was a period of time when Shrewsbury, New Freedom borrowed supplement in.
Right.
Glen Rock's police budget to keep them, to keep them, because they couldn't afford, couldn't afford, couldn't afford.
To the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Although, I don't remember dollar amount there, but it was, there, it was a lot of money.
About a hundred thousand, Tony said.
Yeah.
I, I, that, that kind of, I, I just have one quick question. The eighty K, is that an increase solely because of the calculation, or is part of that because they're actually gonna be paying what they actually owe?
Because they're going, well, they're going by pay what you use, so they used a lot in twenty-sixteen. So it's, it, Sharkey's formula is, you know, uh.
But we were supplementing them the whole time, right? Even last year?
No, they, I don't, no, last year they paid according to what the two-year PPU, I think.
They paid less than what we asked them. Yeah, we, they paid less than what we asked them to pay. They said they would pay their minimum PPU, and they wouldn't go over it. So they did pay less, and we did supplement them.
Bruce?
I, I think, to put this in perspective, you need to just step back about two and a half years. Some of you may recall, we had a little raucous events around here, talking about the police.
I remember calling.
And I, I know, memory fades. Amazing how that happens. But in May, up at the community center, we took a vote, and it said we'd do a five-year commitment. Everybody ran around doing high fives and how great that was. Uh, everybody sort of left. At the end of that meeting, everybody pretty much cleared out and I left. And the fellow who was covering that from the York Dispatch, a guy named, uh, Chris Thornblazer, uh, he caught me in a parking lot. He said, well, what do you think? And I said, well, unfortunately, you didn't solve anything here. I said, this is still gonna be unaffordable, uh, and within a few years, you will find communities will come up and tell you they can't pay the bill. Now, that wasn't any divine insight. I mean, the skies didn't part, the hand of God didn't come and touch me and give me divine insight. That was because I could do middle school math. I knew what Mike Sharkey was proposing for the, um, pay raises for the police union. We knew that the, uh, Stewartstown, uh, um, subsidies, uh, their buy-ins were over. Uh, all of those things were sort of rolled up. It was sort of all well-known, and all you had to do is just project out, and you knew the numbers were gonna be big. Uh, Glen Rock had already told us, for God's sakes, I think maybe ten or a dozen year, every, over the year, it's a letter that would come in. We can't pay this. And in one year, they actually laid out the fiscal reasons why. And so I told Chris Thornblazer, when he asked me for a comment, I said, within a few years, you're gonna see communities won't be able to pay. Now, this is hard for me to admit, but I got it wrong. Uh, my wife will tell you, I never admit I'm wrong. But it didn't take a few years. It only took a few months, because in that fall, when we went to put together the budget, when the actual percentages that rolled through for Glen Rock, I was surprised myself, but their bill came in at three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Well, they had a conniption up there and said, no, we can't do that, no way, no how. And you can go back in and read the October and the November Glen Rock council meeting minutes, and you'll see what happened. They figured out, they were told what a PPU cost. They knew what they were willing to pay, which was like two hundred and eighty-five thousand, and they said, we're gonna cut this many PPU's. And of course, under that PPU system, which I hate, uh, just to go on the record, there was a minimum that was recommended, or a minimum that you couldn't go, and then a recommended amount. They figured out what they were willing to pay and how many PPU's they could buy. That fell in between those two brackets. And so they said, that's what we'll pay. Now, all of that's part of the public record, and you probably, if you followed this, you knew that. But the part you may not know, or may have gone unnoticed by some of you, is how did the finance committee do with that? When they said, you gotta cut three-quarters of a PPU out of the budget? Well, my initial reaction was, we have a part-time officer who's one PPU. We would just cut some of those hours out and move on. There was some concern, there was some discussion, and then the chief finally spoke up and said, you know what? I don't want to lose the part-time officer. I'd rather give up a full-time officer. Now, he didn't really have to give up the officer. What he gave up was a vacancy that we intended to fill, but we're not going to fill. So to appease Glen Rock, your community lost one police officer. And so for all intents and purposes, never mind the SROs, you had thirteen full-time police officers, you went down to twelve. Now, that hurt your detective function. And if you don't believe me, read the February twenty-nineteen minutes of the police commission, when the chief said his caseload under, the detectives' caseload were going up, their unsolved cases were going up, because he didn't have enough manpower. And he asked us to approve some money for Stormin, who was at that time, had been injured and had gone on disability, was back as a civilian, wanted some extra money. The finance committee approved that, but the bottom line is, to appease Glen Rock, you lost a police officer and hurt your detective function. Okay, now move forward, the next year. It's last year now, we're doing a, another police budget. The bill for Glen Rock was going to go again over three hundred thousand dollars. And people were worried that Glen Rock wouldn't be able to pay. You will recall that Winterstown had said, they're out of there. They left. They already, you know, verified the point that, yeah, we can't afford it anymore, and they went someplace else. Now, couple that with the fact that if you looked at the preliminary budgets, the, uh, there were a lot of capital expenditures last year, totaling probably close to almost eighty thousand dollars. And the question was, do you put that into the budget, and if so, where was that gonna drive the budget for Glen Rock? And the answer was, it was gonna go pretty high. So what was the answer? Rob Hertzberger, from over there in, in Stewartstown, proposed, we will pay for those, uh, capital expenditures by hitting the general reserve fund. They're allowed to do that under the terms of the IGA. I personally don't think it's very good management to say, I'm gonna buy stuff this year that I hadn't already put in the budget. Okay, but they did it to do that, and one of the reasons to do that was to keep that cost down for Glen Rock. Well, here you are in twenty-twenty. You can only, you have no more officers that you can't fill or hire anymore. You can't hit the piggy bank anymore. In fact, they took the, the forty thousand, that, some of that that came in from the COVID money to help replenish that. You're not getting any of the money back from the healthcare rebates to help go in and replenish that fund. So, I mean, it's not that Glen Rock is just now getting a seventy or eighty thousand dollar increase. This commission has, over the last several years, taken several steps to artificially keep that cost down from Glen Rock, and you can't do anything anymore. My honest suggestion is, uh, I don't know exactly where Buck is, but this may be one of the few times that he and I are in agreement. I'm really to say sayonara to Glen Rock. Uh, and I know it may increase our costs. I've done a rough count on what the numbers are, and it, the impact to Glen, to our coun, uh, community is about a hundred thousand dollars. It's probably about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Shrewsbury, and on the order of ninety-five thousand dollars to Stewartstown. Now, when we talked about this one time before, about tossing Glen Rock out, back when this whole thing started in twenty-eighteen, or the dust really got kicked up, Stewartstown, you may recall, had made a statement, well, if Glen Rock leaves or somebody leaves, we're not sure that this is viable. Let me just suggest that, for those of you who are sitting on the commission there, or if you run into any of this kind of argument, you might remind them that in twenty-twelve. that in 2012, the state did a study about the merger of Stewartstown Police with Southern Regional Police. And that report is available. In fact, I think we have that report, don't we, Tanya? And you can read in there. And in 2011, the cost to the Stewartstown community for their police force, which I don't even believe was a 24/7 police force, was $525,000. If they accept the responsibility that we go forward with just three communities supporting our police department, their bill will be about $460,000. So if any of them tell, "We don't know if we can do it," just ask them what public services they're getting today for 12% less than they were paying in 2011. So, I mean, just dismiss that argument outright. It is really time to tell Glen Rock, "I'm sorry, we can't afford to keep you here because you're really not in the same league with us." That doesn't mean we're turning them loose. I mean, God knows, we all still pay for state police. Okay? And there's plenty of communities right around here, you know, that are using the state police, and the blood doesn't run in the streets. Moreover, they can always hire their own part-time forces, like Winters Town went to it, North Holtwell Township. The money, if they can only pay $250,000 for police, you can hire new guys out of the academy, you can staff them and put some, you know, give them equipment, and they can probably get at least two, maybe three guys full-time. It won't provide full-time services, but if that's what they want in their community, let them have it. Now, my feeling is, that extra $100,000 that we spend, I know it's going to hurt people. Tanya's already told us that we've got people that are delinquent on bills who have never been delinquent before. But I know Tanya, and I know, and I'm going to say this, Tanya, I hope I don't embarrass you. This lady's got a heart of gold, and people don't believe it. But she works with these people to be compassionate, to do whatever she can to make sure that our community gets by. And if I have to pay extra money, I will pay extra money. But I want it spent in my community, for the benefit of my citizens. I want the police, if we, the time that we're not spending in Glen Rock, that's at least 30 to 40 hours a week, that could be spent either working with youth. You've heard enough about today, you've heard, you know, going to the senior center, telling seniors how to be safe in cyberspace, or telling them about, "Don't get scanned by door-to-door," people really working with the community. There's a lot of things we could do with the police, and I'm not even going to go into all of it. But there you have it. So I really would like to see, and I already passed the budget, so if you really want to insist on subsidizing Glen Rock, it's probably too late this year. But next year, I'd like to see a line item in that budget that's called Glen Rock Charity. And you could just identify to the whole public how much money we're actually going to give to Glen Rock, and then write them out a check for this, because that's what it amounts to. And then finally, I'll get off my soapbox. After I talked with Chris Thornblazer, and we sent in that, the letter to the Southern Regional Police Commission saying that we would stay, it was read at the June meeting. Okay? And I want to just make sure I get this right. Chris Thornblazer came to that meeting, and he reported on it. And you can go online, and you can still find this report. It's there on the York Dispatch stuff. Google up New Freedom Southern Regional Police, and you'll find it. Now, I just want to quote, that started with these three sentences, his article that day, reporting that. And it says, "Last month, New Freedom Borough Council voted to rescind its letter of intent to withdraw from Southern Regional Police Department. On Wednesday, June 7th, a letter detailing their decision was read aloud during the police commission's monthly meeting, making their choice official." Quote, "We are back to status quo, business as usual," Chief Jim Boddington said after the meeting. How prophetic. Here we are again, status quo, back to business as usual with Glen Rock, year after year, can't pay the bill. Now, a lot of you ran for council, or to sit on that side of the dais, and said, "I don't know if you wanted status quo or not, but I think it's time to start throwing a little more backbone with Glen Rock, and either tell them to pay up, or show them the door." Now, how you do that? You work it out in the IGA, according to the terms of the IGA. If they didn't deliver a letter last month, they can't get out until they deliver the letter effective for next year, which puts them in for about two and a half years. If you want to stretch that, Steve, if you want to weigh in, the fact that Glen Rock told you, you know, they told us, they didn't give a letter, said in October, "We can't pay it," I'd take that and say, "You know what, Glen Rock? We can either make you stay through next year all the way, and you pay that bill, because three communities will support that, or you can say, 'You know what? To hell with it. We can all decide to waive it,' and Glen Rock, go ahead. Cut you loose, you're gone, and we'll figure out how to solve it ourselves." That's all I got to say. Thank you.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, that's what we've been talking about. I agree. I think we can make use of the police officers here. Tanya has had several ideas as far as community outreach and service to the community. And I think we're just going to have to keep floating. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
You're absolutely right. My daughter lives in Dallas, and I hear about what goes on. There's a community in the Dallas metro area known as Highland Park. And I don't know all the details, but my daughter tells me that in their community, the police, the fire, the EMTs, they're all sort of cross-trained. So if you're a cop, and you come on duty here, you know what, something happens in EMT, you swap hats, and you're out there doing CPR or whatever else. They make the most effective use out of the, you know, first responders that they have. Maybe it's time to get creative like that, but again, if we're going to pay more, I want to see it my community benefit, not a checkbook written over to give to Glen Rock. Thanks.
I agree.
Thanks, Bruce. I appreciate it.
Can I add one thing? You asked about Buck. Buck did say that he would be willing to compromise between those two percentages. So he thinks that that would be reasonable. But he did tell me on the phone tonight that he thinks maybe Glen Rock should look at, and Glen Rock doesn't agree with this, because he already had that conversation with them, maybe having Southern Regional cover them during the day, and up until 11:00, and having state police cover them from 11:00 PM and 9:00 till 7:00 in the morning. So they wouldn't be a full member of Southern Regional, of the commission, but they would still get the police services.
That's just effectively buying service, right?
Right. But that's what he, I guess he's looking to say to Glen Rock, "If you can't afford to pay your share, this is something you could do." He had that conversation. Glen Rock said, "We don't want to do that. We don't want state police at night."
Well, I mean, Victoria wrote an email that was very derogatory towards police. I mean, I don't think that.
It's in the meetings.
I don't think that they're really in the mood to support the police, or to have the police there. I don't see much hope for keeping Glen Rock anyway. That's why I've been kind of heading in the direction that Bruce has been going in, and I, you know, I agree with that. I don't know how you feel, or how the police commit rest of the place.
I feel you pay for what you get. And this is what they've used over the last, we went back to 2014? Really, 2014, but we decided to go with the last three years. And basically, this is the service that they used from Southern Regional Police. And this is what they'll probably continue to use. I almost think that I would ask the council, I can't make a motion, but I would ask the council perhaps to make a motion that we go along with the IGA and Mike Sharkey's presentation at our last meeting, that it is what it is.
You know what? What does that do with Glen Rock?
Well, they're going to have to, they're going to have to either, or get off the pot. Basically, come up with what you owe and what you're using, or they could, like you said, they could decide they don't want to buy PPU's, they don't want to be a member, they want to be a contract municipality during the day.
Right. The solicitor told us that if everybody, if all of the different municipalities decide they want to use the obligated time, and then Glen Rock says, "No, we're not using that," then it can go to that supermajority. So then it goes back to the police commission, and then we get three-fourths to say that we're going to use obligated time, then we're using obligated time. And then Glen Rock will probably say they can't pay it.
But you know, back when New Freedom Borough, Shrewsbury Borough became part of the Glen Rock's police budget, the understanding, our understanding anyways, probably Shrewsbury Borough, was that we'll give them, it's an opportunity for a breather to get their budget together, get their tax structure adjusted, so they can afford, police can afford. And you know what happened? They didn't do anything. And so we're right back to where we were. Like you said, they're still not doing anything. And so maybe they think, well, maybe the calculation is, if they want us to stay bad enough, they'll pick up the slack for us or something, you know, us being Glen Rock, and, you know. But the handwriting's on the wall. I mean, you know, how expensive does it have to get before Glen Rock just throws in the towel? I think, you know, we already got an idea what that is, where that is, and it just can't stay there.
But at the, yeah, at the last, at the meeting we had, there is going to be another meeting, so I'm hoping that they will, you know, come forth and say, "This is what we can afford," and then we could perhaps work with that and balance it. And if not, but, but don't prolong, and keep, don't keep going on. And I agree with everybody else who do. But I also think that this council should get in on it.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
I think definitely, I definitely think that this council has a responsibility to do that.
I think when you say, "What, they'll come back to us with what they can afford," and so what if they, what they, what they can afford is way below what they're really using?
I'm hoping that they're putting their caps on and thinking really hard until we have, I think the meeting is on the 17th, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I made a motion that we continue. Have a continuation meeting.
And finish it at that time, because we just can't keep going like that. But at the same time, I think that the council should be in on this whole decision.
Well, I think definitely council is going to be looking at what comes out of November 17.
Yes, yes.
I think, you know, we made the motion to advertise the budget, but that doesn't mean that we're locked into what's, you know, what's in the budget for police. We would be open to whatever we, you know, to consider, whatever we need to consider.
That's a good decision.
But I don't think that we could personally get, you know, I don't think we can all en masse go to the police commission.
Well, let's see what happens on the 17th.
Yeah, to the extent that the representatives on the police commission, the representatives of New Freedom Borough, sometimes if they don't know how Borough Council is thinking, it's okay for them to have Borough Council convey to them, "Hey, you're our representatives, and here's the direction we would like to see this go." I agree with you. Going to the meeting, it's even a point of representatives to do that for you. I would give you one example of York Area Regional Police, and Redline Borough was a longtime contracted municipality, and they were buying in excess of $650,000 worth of police services. And at some point in time, they said, "We can't afford this. We only can afford X." And we said, "Well, you use more services than X, just based on the calls that you had." And it came down to, "If you can't afford it, you need to go." And they won. And it was, there was state police. You know, they reached the conclusion that I hear around here is, there is, it is unfair for other municipalities to supplement the costs of another municipality.
I totally agree with that.
And I would tell you that police services, they're expensive, and they're going to get more expensive. And the tensions I see with my clients that have police departments and regional police is, "I can't afford this. This is too expensive," or whatever. I hate to say to all these municipalities, unfortunately, that's the reality of policing right now. It is a very expensive service, and you better get ready to pay for it, or if you can't pay for it, then at some point in time, you've got to find an alternative service, be it the state police or part-time or whatever.
Marsha?
I understand your desire for them to compromise and come up, but we were at the council meeting, Glen Rock, when Sharkey presented, and the animosity from that council against the police commission, and "we're not going to pay it, and we're not going to do this," it was, it was so palpable. It was like, "Please leave."
Yeah. So, I mean, no, no, if they're not willing to work on their budget, and, you know, to come up with a reasonable thing, then I think just cut them loose. I mean, you know, we have this five-year, you know, five-year contract, isn't that what we had? It went from three years to five years, it came up. So then, you know, then it's time. But then, in all fairness, we have done, as human beings, we've done everything possible, and then just let it go.
I think, I don't know that this is a motion, but I think that we could honestly say that we're interested in paying the actuals, which would put us at $530,886 in Glen Rock paying what they're supposed to pay. And if not, then we're interested in Glen Rock leaving, and us working out something with the other municipalities. So I guess if you're looking for direction, does that sum it up?
And that's what I'm looking for today.
Does that, does anyone have any objection to? I think that's just a direction.
If Glen Rock sees it's unfair, point out what's unfair about the services they receive, and the amount they receive, because they're being over-pleased or something, but apparently that's not the case.
Right. Yeah, Glen Rock.
And hopefully, chief will decide that he can work something out without having to fire two or lay off two police officers.
Can we just say that that's our direction, pretty much, and that we're willing to work with that?
And we will go back to the police commission with that report?
And I would say to your observation earlier about what the year's notice. I haven't seen the contract right now, but I would assume that if every single member of that contract, every municipality, would agree to waive the one-year notice, I'm sure that could occur, and therefore get them out earlier if they can't afford to be a member of the police.
Well, the flip side, they obviously have, they obviously.
One year.
The contract said, yeah, but what I'm saying is, if all the municipalities waive the one-year notice, then I think you can, you know, and accelerate the time.
The flip side that, though, is there's going to be get-out costs. I mean, you're on a hook for pension obligations and stuff. I mean, even if they leave tomorrow, they're on the hook for some amount of dollars to cover that.
So that's forever. Until a police officer dies, there will be a hook for that.
Steve, this is going to be, I guess I'm asking for speculation on your part, but what if, you know, so that happens, and Glen Rock's on the hook for it, and Glen Rock says, "You know what? We're not paying it either. We want the police to not pay it." No, we're not paying any pension obligations or something either. So.
Steve makes some money, because we're going to be saying.
You're going to the court of common pleas, and trying to obtain a judgment against them for that expense.
Does anyone have anything else?
So that overall increase of $300 and some thousand, like, what would the increase look like then for the community? Like, I mean, how much is that really?
So Bruce just said it was about $100,000.
I don't have the exact numbers, but it's about $100,000 to New Freedom.
It would be about $100,000. I ran some numbers earlier today.
So per house?
To keep them as they are.
Right. So per household, we're looking at whatever it is.
I'm sorry?
Per household, you're looking at, I mean, not that much of an increase.
Yeah, it really wouldn't be that much per household, no.
And we're not having to share with a whole nother town.
And we would increase our own police services, and hopefully, there would be other benefits to it, too. Maybe some community outreach, some bike lessons, some, you know, just, and they could even work with REC to do a program for CPR, or for, you know, there'd be other things that they could do with the community. But those services would be given to the people who are actually paying the bills. And that's what I think is.
Yeah.
Andy, do you, I don't know, do you think their police department, if we're asking to do that, they're prepared, they have the training for the people to do these things? I mean, if we ask for, you know, to start next year, let's say, and do community outreach, and do they have, because I don't know if they have experience with that in the past, and I don't know how much training their officers have to be able to do that, but if that's going to be the case, I think they should be looking at that, too, and how we get our officers' training for these kinds of things in New Freedom. If there's going to be more community outreach in New Freedom, it's not, it's not their standard policing model right now where they do that. So, you know, if they have to get some additional training, then hopefully they'll do that.
Well, there's probably some, some of the officers probably have more of a ability to interact with the community than some of the other ones, so I think that probably.
They already do stuff in the community. They're at the carnival, they're at, what is it called? The police night, like the.
Oh, yeah, Light the Night.
Yeah, Light the Night. Like, I see them doing a lot of things in the, when I would have the teen dances, I mean, they would just stop by and talk to the kids and things like that, so.
Yeah. I don't think it's a reach, I think.
Yeah, I don't think it's a reach, I think.
No, not at all. And I think if we had a fun.
If they still have the bicycle unit, but I know all the kids used to love the officer that was running around town on the bike, you know, he'd stop, he'd talk to them. If there was a problem, you know, he got to know them and, and they would come to him and say, hey, by the way, there's going to be a drug deal going on in that town. So, I heard, you know, we draw information by making friends with kids and other people in the, in the community. We really do and we had that at one time. I, I remember that.
Bruce, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, just as sort of the mechanism of how you do this, I mean, talking about some strategies, I think Steve is probably right. I mean, if all the communities agree to do something, you can waive or change whatever you want to in that IGA. But I mean, it might make sense to, you know, to Glen Rock, you know, obviously they're, they're probably not prepared to go out and secure some other police services in the next six weeks. So it's like, and, and we probably, as Denny pointed out, the police might, may need to rethink, how would they structure these kind of community programs and what they need to do. I mean, you might suggest something along the lines of, if you're getting out, you know, come July 1st, you're done, the first six months, you take the next six months to figure out what you're going to do. Police department will spend its six months trying to figure out how it's going to better serve the remaining communities and set a termination date there. Glen Rock, you pay the full amount for the first six months, which will, you know, be about 170,000, which is probably on the order of 100,000 less than the current plan and they can figure out what to do with that 100,000 and how they're going to move forward in the second half of the year. So I, I think a lot has to go with how you present it, but I think a lot of those things that Steve said, if it's up to us and we want to waive it and change it, we can do it.
Marsha?
I have a question for Steve. You've worked on a lot of, of police department consolidations. I know, I read three years ago that the state police, because they've been dipping into that general fund, are, is going to start charging communities for services. Can you, have you heard anything about where that is right now? I mean, Glen Rock should be paying attention. They're not going to get off scot-free using state police, maybe for a year, but.
Yeah, it's been a very political issue and it comes up every year around budget time with their proposals set forth as to how we're going to charge local communities for the use of state police. And I think for the past three years, it's come up with a formula and it's never been approved by the legislature. You have a tension of small, of representatives that represent small counties and municipalities who can't afford to pay anything and they always vote against it and therefore it never gets enough votes to, to actually be adopted. But I, I would agree that there's been more momentum every single year, so at some point in time, that's going to occur. I just hope when it occurs, it's that they come up with a fee that's a fair representation of the service they're getting. My concern is that they'll put their toe halfway in the water and charge a small fee so it's not too painful when really these municipalities are getting a very valuable service from the state police and we're all paying for it.
Yeah, Steve?
And when that happens, one of the other problems with the municipality is they're, they're not going to get full police service like we do. State police are not going to enforce any local ordinance, so they're going to have to have somebody that they're going to have to hire. And I remember in the past, they wanted to give the mayor and all their council members ticket books so they could go out and issue, and issue tickets.
Can we do that in New Freedom? I got a couple of.
And I'm like, let's get a pad for some parking. But, you know, they're not going to get from state police. They have two units that run from Dover to Maryland Line every night. There are two officers in each of those units and if a tractor trailer overturns on 83 and something happens in Glen Rock or here, if we had state police or right over on Hamilton, Hamilton Overlook, it's going to be three days till they get a police officer there if you're looking at state police. And maybe they need to learn that the hard way because they keep saying, we see state police coming through here every day, every day. Well, yeah, they're coming through, you know, the Morris or.
From somewhere else, yeah.
Somewhere else.
Did we have anything on the Intergovernmental Committee? Eric, Kim?
Just Kim and I have been attending Stewartstown, Shrewsbury, Glen Rock, just keeping our face relevant and.
Got some nice comments from Shrewsbury that they appreciate the fact that we're, we're there working together and, and seeing our faces and knowing that we're.
Available.
We want to be a part of, available and want to be a part of, of the local scene.
Any other public comment? We don't really need an executive session, do we? Oh, I'm sorry.
The senior center?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please. Consider the community building, what are we going to do, the main building, the actual January 1st, are we going to?
Could you use the microphone?
Yeah, we get microphone.
I just wanted to have the council consider reopening the community center, whether or not you feel that this particular time is appropriate, so I can.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're still in the same holding pattern. I mean, they just closed New York Catholic for a week. They've had three cases of COVID. My granddaughter just went in. I have not seen her for, she's at college, but she's been quarantined now. She'll get out, I think, tomorrow. I don't think we're in a position yet unless someone has something that I don't know.
Do you have to make a motion?
Maybe Joe Biden will come up with something.
That'll work. Sure, I would entertain a motion to keep the community center closed until, I think, maybe just make it for the first of the year. It's, I mean, if some, obviously if a vaccine comes up and something dramatic happens, but I, I don't foresee that, so I would entertain a motion for the first of the year.
And I'll second it.
Okay. I think you made it. And all in favor?
I'll second.
Pass? My vote is aye.
You want to talk?
Oh, yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, Tanya, we, the cameras are on and the last, the last meeting, Kim got to me the, the video and we've got it up on YouTube now and if you search New Freedom Borough on YouTube, you'll find it. And I reached out to the guy that does the website, Richard, and said, can you put it, can you put it on the website? He said, oh, it'd be easy, yeah, it wouldn't be a problem at all. And I said, well, maybe where we, where we show the file, you know, the, the minutes of the meeting, you have another little button there that says video. So, does that make sense for everybody? Well, he, he, he won't, he won't listen to me, so could you tell him? And also, and also apparently I can't send him the video or I can't, I got a link on, all I have to do is send him a link. Do you want me to send it to him or do you want to send it?
I want to send it to him or me doesn't matter.
How about I send it to both of you and we'll say, oh, okay. Because all it is is, it's like 12 characters and you get that, you put that on the little button, you click on it, go right to YouTube.
While he's on that page with the meeting minutes, the months, where he says like September 2020 is lime green, light lime green on a light tan background. So you can't even see the months to click on because he makes all the font white because like the paragraph's white, but then when he lists the individual months for the minutes, it's this color that blends into the background and it's so hard to see.
iPads or iPhones, it, it doesn't show up. If you do it on your computer, it will show up.
Huge to, to.
But, yeah, he needs to change the color.
Just make the font white would be helpful.
I don't think we need the executive session for personnel. I think we already know it's on and brings us to the jury.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I go to the side.
All right, ladies, we should go ahead. Well, we missed that. I'm sorry. I love you, don't cut off your lights. We can still watch.